Okay, this meeting has come to order. Today is May 23rd, 2017. It's scheduled seven to nine. This will be a work session only. No decisions will be made, except as noted. There are some exceptions. Our bills payable, meeting minutes. Topics of discussion tonight are water and sewer bill, assistant program, sewer lagoon update, weed control, and park update. Please note this meeting will last two hours and will cover only items that time allows. And I can guarantee you that we are gonna be out in the sun enjoying the sun here. So, we don't have a large agenda, but we'll get through it, okay? So, all current council members are present. So is myself. John Bukovich is absent. He is in Seattle. Reed Spiegel is here, town clerk, and also Mr. Medoff, our town lawyer, Carl Sunstrom, and then we have Claire Boone's daughter and her husband here. Let's go ahead and we will go through the bills payable. Reed, you can go ahead and...
Okay. Parts from Carquest. Hawkins, we get our chlorine from Empire Office, our contract for our printer. I'm guessing Joe Malaney did some work on the skater system for us. We got checks. Fred Burr, there's like two months left on that, I believe, so we're very close to finishing that. Woodland stuff. Cookies for the meeting. These AFR reports, this is going to the top of my priority list because we're accumulating these fees for late reports. But that's a process of taking the audit reports and then supplementing them with a little bit of information. Maybe I'll work on that with auditors when they're out here, too.
When are they coming?
They'll be here the 7th to the 9th of June.
And the 294 Montana Department of Commerce?
Uh, revenue, I believe.
Revenue, excuse me?
Yeah. Roberts' work. Locates. First audit bill. Not cheap. Some ads in the mail. Trash bags. Fuel. Phone bill. Reimbursement for Gina to a training. More fuel. Office supplies. Car parts for the crew. More parts for the crew. This is to the DEQ, this next one, 6283, but that is basically the license renewal for our crew members. It's a yearly fee. Not related to the meeting. Matt's cellphone. Various things at Hopkins. And then some mileage reimbursement for Brett, David, myself, and Councilman Johnson.
Are those renewal fees annual?
Yeah. So... I think that was David's and Ed's. And Sam's. I believe Sam just got another license as well. Not sure which one, but...
How much are we expecting to spend on the audit and what is...
Uh, so the contract is for $27,000. That includes the, that's the closing and the year-end audit, I believe. So, that's the annual amount.
The payment was a third.
Yeah, just thinking ahead, we signed a three-year contract with them, but that is something that we're probably gonna wanna shop around a little bit once the contract is renewed. That came up right after I started. So, I didn't have much context as far as whether that was expensive or not. I think we are on the high end as far as...
Well, they do a, they do a great job.
They do.
I mean, they're very thorough in their, their, this is an area that we had to get under control.
Yeah.
And they've got us on a pattern. And so I think they've done a wonderful job. And I mean, we're paying some money for them, but it's, I think it's well worth it. We're into the second year of the three?
Yeah, I think this is the second.
We don't have any more boxes.
Right.
That's a good thing.
So, do we have any comments from the other councilmen?
Nope. Everything looks good.
Okay. Do I have a motion to pass the bills payable?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Okay, that is done. Next on our agenda is the town council meeting from April 4th. Yeah, meeting minutes, I'm sorry. And they're in front of you. So, is there any questions on the meeting minutes? Can I have a motion to pass the meeting minutes?
I'll make a move.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The town council meeting minutes for April 4th, 2017. Okay, topics of discussion tonight. Number one is the water and sewer bill assistant program. As you probably know, Councilman Johnson and Mr. Spiegel went to a conference for clerks and councilmen and other people involved in communities in billings and spent four days of strenuous training. But anyway, they came back with a lot of stuff, and I appreciate you guys bringing this back to our attention. You know, because that is valuable to look at, see what other towns are doing. So, this must be yours, Mr., or Councilman Johnson, is that correct?
Reed and I both heard of this. And apparently there is a community, at least one, that is receiving some help, but we have bored of research. Everything I've found out so far is strictly water. I mean, I need power and gas for winter assistance. But, but we're gonna work on it some more and see what we can find out. Propulsively, you know, meeting the standards as far as who and some people, if they may be available, if maybe some funds available to help them pay their water bill.
Would this be in conjunction with the LEF program about assisted?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so...
Basically. Far as I know...
To your knowledge, now it's probably a state, states involved?
Far as I know, yeah. Although I've gone through EPA, CHS, and I haven't gotten anything yet, so...
Okay.
We're still working on it, though.
Mr. Trump didn't veto that?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
But it just came out today.
I know he is taking some, some money from the SNAP program, which I'm not really in favor of, but anyway. So, anything else, Reed, that you'd like to...
No, I think it's the others, just some pilot programs in the state where either a town or a kind of a region maybe are addressing these. Could be a water district or something. But it might be an interesting case study that we could look at following eventually, so... I think it was Roundup was the town. I don't know.
That sounds about right.
Yeah.
Well, they got, they got a lot of, they got a lot of water problems, ain't they?
Yeah, they have a big flood.
Yeah.
Yeah, they constantly flood.
Yeah, muscles show.
And, and there's not a whole lot of people there.
So, council, any question about on this or questions that you'd like to ask these two, or...
I'd like to see it pursued a little bit more, just because I think it's a good thing. And we, we've talked so many times about people on fixed incomes, including myself now. And I think if we really got down to it, there'd be a significant number of people in this town that are on fixed incomes.
Very possible.
And assuming that they do, they do power?
Yeah, yeah.
And they, so there's no reason to have...
They've helped me with my power in the past.
Some program out there. So, we'll, we'll keep going and see what we can find out.
Okay. Rob, you have any questions?
Dom might just get the information from one of you and see if I could track down some information on this as well.
Okay, excellent. Okay, sewer lagoon update. We had a meeting with the EPA or the DEQ that occurred on the, was it 15th of May? On a Monday. We met for approximately about two hours and discussed the issues that we're dealing with as far as how we're attacking the problem with the, the lagoons. It was a, it was a very good meeting. I thought a lot of stuff was brought forth that was positive and could help us. And so, I just want the council just to give me your opinion and, and just, if you have any updates, I'll let you go ahead and Councilman Reddy.
I thought the meeting was really productive. We dealt with the AOC. We were able to mitigate the problems with that and put ourselves in a better position financially. There was three important issues to me that were dealt with. Number one was they, they felt as though, or they indicated that it was fine with them, them being the DEQ, that we remain with our footprint. And so that was a big unknown, so that was a good thing. The conversation that occurred about metals was a positive thing in terms of it being indicated that they're gonna hang the metals problem around the neck of the town, primarily because it's the nature of the history here in the valley, and that was another really good thing. There is an update on the possibility of rolling that potential $300,000 grant that would have been in, in, put into play with that sludge removal and mitigation. That's no longer on the table, so we found that out yesterday. They're not gonna allow that to roll over. However, that whole grant was premised on completely shutting those lagoons down and going into remediation with them. So therefore, even though we can't access that $300,000, by the same token, we're not gonna be obligated for another $400,000 to $500,000 that we would have come up with. So I suppose that's, that's a win also for us. The sludge testing will be done on Friday, the 27th. Dan Kramer's coming from World Water. They're gonna get that handled. We need to sit down with John and put together this leak study. This is the primary concern of the DEQ right now, and that we get that done. And I don't, there's some sort of mechanical mechanism and a little bit of math to be able to figure that out. I don't think it's, there's any major cost involved in that. It's, we just have to get our public works director lined up and get him to do that ASAP. That's sort of some, that's a, that's a linchpin to how we follow through on that. Also, with regard to the sewer lagoon and the outflow line that was installed, we will be having, for you folks, because I know you're concerned, we'll be having a conversation tomorrow morning with the engineers. And in terms of, there's a, there's an existing one-year warranty on the construction process. And so what we're gonna do is we're gonna sit down with the engineers, we're gonna be on the phone tomorrow with the engineers, and we're gonna instruct the engineers to get together with Intermountain, and we're gonna revisit the final outcome and disposition of the layout, the physical characteristics of what are going on down there. So that process will begin tomorrow. And then we will, as soon as, we, what we will do is we'll indicate to the engineers that he needs to sit down with the Intermountain again and point out, we have a list of things in terms of, that are kind of in the gray area about what their contract obligations were. So, that conversation will start tomorrow morning at nine o'clock.
Because we have to turn on the water.
Right, and so that's, that's one of the issues of the conversation. Again, we'll, we'll be starting that process tomorrow, and he, we'll instruct him to get a hold of Intermountain ASAP on that.
Because that water's gonna be turned on this weekend.
Right, so that's, that's what's going on on that level. Again, with the rest, with respect to the, to the lagoons. Now that we've turned this thing around, we, we're in a position now where we're in the driver's seat, and, and we're going to have to keep on this. We're gonna have to keep the momentum going on this. So I would like for all the council to, to help me as the chairman get a, a sort of a motivational critique with our public works director to make sure that this stuff is done in a timely manner. The other thing is, you know, we took potential fines on that AOC from $10,000 down to $2,800. That's a substantial win for us. There are some other things involved with that, some other minor fines, but I wanna get, I wanna find out, I wanna get a summation of all of it and find out how we process that and get that handled as much as possible. Also, I'm getting, I'm gonna keep any little bit of updating that I can do with the DEQ. I'm gonna go directly to the DEQ via email and keep them apprised of what we're doing, even the smallest considerations, just to let them know that we're not gonna drop the ball on this and that our momentum is gonna keep going. So, so it looks like we'll do the sludge testing, we'll get that done. We'll start the process with the augmentation, the bio-augmentation process, and then we'll, at the same time, hopefully, we'll get the leak testing done and we'll go from there.
Well, one of the things I thought that they said to us, which I really thought was a good point, is that we've tested that lagoon three, three different times already. You know? So, what they said to us is, you know, quit doing that. We want one study and that's it. You know, we don't wanna have to come back and do the sludge and do this. Is that kinda how you guys took that as?
The, the other thing I might say for the public record also is that we were staring into a $50,000 bill for this ammonia mix study. We were thinking that that might be part of what we had to cough up, and it looks as though they're going to pay for that. So again, when we start to pile the stuff up, things are moving in our direction. So we're saving $50,000, which would have been part of that process of doing the PER with, with our engineers. So, we're, we're trying to minimize the costs, obviously, but do the requisite stuff that we need to do. And that was a big load off our shoulders of $50,000 for that study. So, that falls in their court on that. That's a really good thing also. So, we're off the hook on the metals. We're off the hook on the ammonia study. We've got to do the leak study, and we have to put together the infiltration study also. And we'll go from there. And we are starting to accumulate a little excess in our sewer funds, so we have a little bit of money to, to start the process with. I spoke to Tracy McIntyre this morning. She let us know, of course, that the $300,000 was not operational for us any longer. And so we're gonna keep in contact with her and let her know what our next moves are. So anything I send to the DEQ will go to the, to Reed, we'll turn it to the council, and then also our engineer.
And our engineer.
Our engineer, yes.
And just so unclear, she, they denied the UV usage of the money?
Yeah, essentially that, that, what it boils down to is that sludge removal proposal came out of an agency that deals strictly with reclamation. And so, that meant what it is, which is to, to decommission and reclaim, and that's not what we're doing. So essentially, we lost the parameters of what the money was allocated for specifically, which was reclamation.
But we're still eligible to apply for that in the future?
Yeah, definitely. And we'll, and, and actually instructed her also to send a letter to the agency thanking them for consideration. And we'll, she'll shoot that over, we'll review it, and then the mayor will sign it, we'll send it to them. Them being, it was at the Fishwild Land?
No.
DNRC. DNRC, thank you.
Devon Clary.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll send those folks a thank you letter and, and, you know, explaining what our thinking was on it. So, that's for that.
Okay, any questions from the council?
When John will be back?
John will be back on Friday. No, Thursday.
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, weed control.
Carl's, Carl's got something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, just a question. Did they talk, did you bring up bugs in the bag?
Yes.
And what, what was the response to that?
Mixed.
The reason being?
Well, they, 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 I don't think that they have a real background, you know, like practical knowledge. And it was, it was not an absolute, yeah, that's, this is the saving thing, nor was there, this is ridiculous. It was somewhere in between. One of them said, yeah, we've got some good results, and someone else said, eh, not so good results. So, but there wasn't any sort of shutdown about it, like, don't do this, you can't do this, you shouldn't do this. They said, fine, you're gonna pursue it.
When does our permit expire?
2020. 2020.
2020.
Yes.
Did they bring up anything from this triennial commission that met? In the executive summary, states collectively, these findings indicate that the basic tenet of the general variance, that meeting the nutrient standards in the absence of dilution would cause substantial and widespread economic harm, continues to be true.
They did not speak to that specifically. However, they, they seemed very open to the, to our financial situation. In other words, they, and I think that that was demonstrated by them, by them backing off substantially on the fines.
Yeah, and the other thing is, when in that report on, you know, variances and end of pipe, they, the monthly average, they talk about a million gallons per day exceeding or a million gallons less. And then there's the footnote, lagoons not designed to actively remove nutrients. And where do we fall? We're a lagoon, right, right now.
Right.
So the thing is, if it says we can't afford it, we know at one time what the MHI was for this town. There was a chart when we were on that little committee.
Right.
Showed Phillipsburg way, way up as far as cost is concerned. And I guess my question is, are they stalemating because they don't know the direction we should go?
I think that, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish.
I mean, we, we know upfront that we cannot afford one of these mechanical treatment plants.
Right.
And that's an impossibility, so we look at the other avenues for, doing the best we can based on the economic status of the city.
Right, and that, that was basically our point of view, and it's my opinion that they were hearing what we had to say. In other words, they looked at our, our exceedances, and, and they looked at them specifically and individually, and they, in fact, said, hey, here, here, and here, you're not that far above, even in the kind of crummy situation that's going on. So that's what we impressed on them, that E. coli is an example, is our main problem. But then we put forth the possibility of putting a standalone E. coli UV situation down there on the outflow and the things. And they were totally amenable to that. In fact, they said, could you do that before you do the final reconditioning? In other words, could, which was my opinion, if we could address that specific issue, and there's some BOD stuff, then I think we're inching toward the compliance. The other thing I'll tell you politically is that there's a new DEQ head. He's fairly new, and his, and his attitude is you cannot bankrupt these towns. I mean, they were pretty, but John Ariga was pretty blatant about it. He said, well, we, we've got a new guy and he's got a sort of new attitude. I got the, from dealing with these guys on and off over a decade, I got the impression that there's, there's starting to be a little more realistic about stuff.
So as long as, you say we have a footprint, as long as we, we show progress towards attempting to reach standards which have not been accepted?
Right.
Okay, we're, we're okay?
We, we should be fine as long as we can demonstrate that. And again, here we went, what was this, the third extension on the AOC?
Oh, yeah.
So, so, and then, of course, they gave us, they relieved the pressure on the fines and that. So they, objectively, they are working with us. They know our situation. And we, we, often when they do these big seminars statewide, there's a couple of towns they talk about with frequency, and we're one of them.
Do you, and last question, do you or John go to the nutrient working group?
I have not had the time, Carl, at all.
Has John gone?
To my knowledge, I don't think so.
Can we encourage him to go?
Sure.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes on that maybe, you know, being on scene, he or, you know, somebody could raise questions.
Right, and our former public works director sat on the board on that. He went pretty consistently.
And so did Petcher, which makes me worry.
Yeah, so, I know the history of it. But, but that's, that's, you know, we'll look into that, and I know I get your emails, but you kind of keep up on that rotation scheduling and so forth. And, and maybe we sit down, we have a conversation about it, and we can, one of the council members might be able to play into it. But it's always good to have representation on that level. That level is massive in terms of recommendations toward the regulators. It's, they're, I think, from what I've experienced, there's sort of the reality check on a lot of stuff.
Exactly. The big thing is, is if the, the one lagoon is compromised, or the lagoons are compromised, then we have a whole different situation. Okay, that's kind of what they told us. And, and they were very nice about actually waiving, I believe, any limits now, from now on, till we, we do our testing and we do the ammonia. Is that correct?
No more fines, yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
So I mean, they, they are working with us.
The, the, the critical factor right now, what's, will determine which direction we go?
Yes.
Is this leak testing. If it's in, if we do a leak test and there's no leaking, then in terms of our physical footprint, which all along, I, I maintain that because of the nature of the ground there, and it's almost to develop, it's a wetland type scenario, and you have groundwater within four feet of the bottom of the lagoon, the last thing on Earth that we want to do is take it up. So, that to me was a big victory, and I'm, I'm one of the, in sort of the sequential way of biting at this thing, that we can do that, assuming that there's no major leaks, and with physical observations, there doesn't appear to be.
I remember when Jim put the camera down there and went to the lagoons, and the water that was coming through was absolutely unbelievable.
Right, and so they're, they're looking at the actual physical parameters of the lagoons, like the holding walls and that sort of thing. And there's no indication of any aqueduct, any, any plant type activity that would indicate a lot of, you know, sub, subwater right below the surface there, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
The only other thing that I might say is that they did want us to measure the actual volume of water that was going through the influent pipe. They said that's the only way you can really see if and be things are happening, and then see how much is coming out.
Right.
And they asked us, how, what do you think? Is there a lot coming out? And to be honest with you, it's, there wasn't. Now after this rainstorm and stuff like that, there might be, but... So, that's the other thing we have to do immediately is address that, so... Any other questions?
No, I, I would say that the, the meeting was relatively productive, Carl. You know, the only, they, they gave us a lot more room and, and gave us some room to breathe and be able to do things. But, you know, again, they were not necessarily committable. They're kind of non-committal. They're bureaucrats, you know? But they came and I think they really... The sewer project, I think now, is really going to move ahead forward. And that, no, no more about all these options and everything else. It's just gonna get done. We're gonna get it done, and then we'll move on to the next thing.
Good.
Okay. I got one question.
Sure.
Going back to the sewer inflow, any, any ideas when any of those concerns will be figured out? How you guys wanna handle them? That list that Claire gave you guys?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Well, yeah, tomorrow will be beginning of the process. We also have, we also have received a, a list from the engineer himself, what his concerns are. He has some genuine concerns that dovetail with what Claire's concerns were. I mean, there's, there's probably three or four of them that are the same, basically. So tomorrow, we'll start that process with him. And if that means that he has to get the, the construction company back out, then that's probably what's gonna...
Because we can't get water on the pasture.
Yeah, because I mean, right now, how that is set up, I mean, we're gonna lose a third of that field because we can't get water there.
Yeah, we have, you know, discussed different things, but, you know, the biggest thing is that the concerns that you're, you know, that was written to us, was, like I say, very similar to what... Because, because the engineer and, and the property owner walked the whole line, I believe. So, we have a good grip on that, and also, I went down with the property owner and, you know, looked around. And so, we're, we're well aware of it. There's been discussion about it. And like I say, well, tomorrow we will, and we do know that you're gonna turn the water on this weekend. So, we'll, we'll try to figure out and see what we can do to...
I think the, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I think the, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think what we'll do is, we'll have our conversation with the engineer, we'll mandate that he sets up a situation with the, uh, construction company, then we will contact you and let you know at that timeline. We'll just keep you apprised of what's, what's going on on our side.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Anything else? We.
Okay. One more thing.
Yes.
The play pipe, the plastic, the garbage they got left out there, is it gonna get cleaned up?
That's, that's part of the list, yeah.
Yes, it will be cleaned up. Yes, it will.
Okay, let's go on to the weed control. Let's see, where are we at on that, Robert?
Well, last I spoke with, uh, I believe it's Kathy down in the basement of the, um, of the courthouse, I got a copy of the letter from her that they've sent out to individuals with weed problems in the past. It has worked quite well for them, is at least a first step. Uh, so I would be pretty much ready to send that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, but I guess the next step might be compiling essentially a list of people that we need to contact regarding the weeds. Um, if we want to go with an ordinance or whatnot, we can certainly do that as well, I'm happy to work with that. But as far as first step, the letter seems to get ninety percent of it done according to her past experience. So, I think that might be a good route. The question I would have is, who do we send it to? And that's, I suppose, a matter of driving around town or otherwise, figuring out who has a bunch of uncontrolled weeds on their property.
Robert, are we just gonna work off of this, what the county currently has, or are we gonna adopt an ordinance?
Either way, whichever you all decide, I'm happy to draft an ordinance. I'm sorry?
I said, it's copacetic for us to work off the county ordinance?
I think so, yeah.
You think so?
Yep, um, if we wanted to adopt something with identical or similar language, or for that matter, different language, we can do the same. But I think courtesy letter as a start is gonna do, have a major effect. And if you wanna draft any sort of ordinance, I suppose that would be for discussion with the council.
I'm assuming if you wanted to enforce it, you'd have to enact an ordinance, don't you not?
Probably so, or we can get with the county and do theirs, but yeah, I think we should look into an ordinance. Exactly how that ordinance will look, I think, needs some discussion among the councils, how we wanna proceed, what penalties, et cetera. Um, but I think some of that county language, we can use that as maybe a basis for discussion.
And we currently don't have a policy or procedure or?
Essentially, no.
Okay.
Weed enforcement wise, um, what, Reed, what, in last year's budget, you were, you budgeted weed control money, did you not?
Yeah. Something in your mind? Forty-two hundred or something.
Forty-two hundred. Was, was that for private land or town land?
This, this is why I'm asking, I wanna make the distinction here, we're, we're, we're talking about private people on their property now. I'm going to town to the money that we allocate to do our spraying, and then in the past, we did it in conjunction with the county.
Pay the county to spa, spot spray, right, isn't that?
No, what, what, we were informed about that. Karen up at the extension office is wonderful.
Yeah.
She has all the, the chemicals that we need to use to, to kill whatever we need to use, and she is okay, I believe, with, with a person going up there and, and spraying, you know, those, that area of the park, okay? The thing that I was told, and I, and I did not know this, is that the county is only responsible for the roadways, correct? And the burrow pit, little bit of the burrow pit.
Yeah, uh, and she said they've been doing the, some of the town park as well, as long as it's not too close to neighbors. They're worried about the chemical spreading to neighbors' properties. Uh, she is a great resource on this stuff, and, uh, she, I think, encouraged possibly hiring a private entity, who, there was a person on the table to do that, uh, as opposed to having the county do it, so that they can maybe get a little closer into some of the private stuff and do it a little better.
That, that was sort of my, original part of my question and line of thinking here. Uh, in the past, we've allocated money, and it's gone to the county, and the county has done the spraying, quote unquote, for us. But now I'm hearing that it was only the roadways and the burrow pits, and a little bit. So, there is no written agreement to your knowledge between the town and the county?
I've never seen one.
That delineated exactly what the responsibilities were.
They have a new weed boss, it's, uh, Mr. Swanson. David Swanson, he is in charge of the weed spraying.
Well, what I just, I would put this question on the floor with the council, what, what is your general attitude about, um, going privately, just hiring someone to do our spraying exclusively whatever the county's doing? Or to keep the situation the same with the county, and if we were to do that, do we wanna define it better in writing?
Well, I think the big issue here, let, excuse me, the big issue is, I met with the commissioners, and they said, if we're not doing our job, we will do our job, okay? This is the first thing we, you know, cause I did ask them, I said, what's going on with the, you know? And they were very, very, they said, hey, we'll take care of our side of the deal, and you guys take care of, is that kind of what you got?
Yeah, it sounded like there'd been maybe a lack of communication.
Yeah.
Or effective communication between the two entities. Um, one thing I was contemplating after those discussions was maybe, might be a good idea to have the county do the roads and hire someone private for everything else, has a little bit more flexibility.
That's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I just wanna reiterate here, sometimes we, this stuff is spoken about and talked about, and, well, you'll do this, and we'll do this, and there's no written understanding, and then, poor metaphor, but it withers, it withers on the vine, and then less and less gets done, and we have, uh, other priorities, and then all of a sudden, we're, we're writing checks for two or three thousand dollars for a couple hours of spraying, so. So, if we do, if we do maintain our association with the county, I think it's important that we really, um, update this in terms of the defined roles, basically, right?
I, I would agree, certainly an update in writing contract essentially, and then keeping up with it to make sure they're fulfilling their role of that contract, cause I think even when there's understanding written or not, we have to stay on top of them to make sure that those weeds are actually getting sprayed.
It was always kind of spotty when I worked the parks, quite honestly, I mean, i- if we go into an agreement with the county, I'd, I'd like to see a written agreement.
Yeah.
In other words, in other words, okay, uh, you know, you're gonna spend X amount of hours spraying weeds in certain places, or, or some way to make everybody responsible, so that it's not just another check that goes out, and we're only getting, uh, we're getting less than what we paid for, so. I mean, they do a good job, but it, it, it's just spotty, I mean.
Well, they said, like I said, the commissioner said, we'll handle our weed spraying. But if you have something that's bothering you, then let us know, and they told me, they said, the person that is in charge of this now is Mr. Swanson, so.
Swaney?
Yeah, Swaney, yeah. I think, I think if anything, you know, I can talk to him, and then we'll, we'll be fine.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, then you would take on the responsibility of, of communicating with the county?
Yes.
About the possibility, and then at our next meeting, we'll have some kind of information to, as to make a decision?
Yes, that is correct.
So, let's take a two-track approach here, you talk to the county, you figure out what they, what, how we might wanna use them. If it's on a limited scale, at the same time, you probably get some commercial quotes for somebody we wanna augment them with.
That's correct.
Okay.
Do we have money, Reed?
We'll find money. I mean, this is rolling over the budget too, so, if we.
Which, the whole budgeting process is another thing that's coming up.
Right.
So, we're entering the end of the fiscal year.
My, my understanding as well was there already was at least one bid on the table, uh, do you have a copy of that?
That, that was through the Trail Association, that wasn't really through us.
Which was really, it was good.
Yeah.
I mean, it was really good.
But I'm sure, the person that, that presented that is quite capable, very good at what they do, and, and very precise, and I have no problem with the person that was, you know, dealing with that. I think that's our, when it really comes down to it, that's gonna be our option, gentlemen and ladies.
So, you might undertake connecting with this individual?
Sure.
And, you know, talk to Mr. Swanson, talk to this individual?
Okay.
And then you become to us with the, with whatever the quotes might be.
Okay.
Um, we have to figure out, yeah, in your, but.
Well, just from the budgeting, I mean, and just thinking about it, what are we, what are we spraying? Well, we're spraying the parks partially, that's part of it, right? So, that would be allocated towards the parks. Then the streets and roadways, I guess, we go to streets, and there's a sidewalk section as well. So, I mean, it can kind of be split across different things too, um, really. When we have a plan of attack, as far as what we're gonna be hitting, and it'll be easier to kind of say, okay, can we budget that towards that?
Okay. So, it may turn out that if the county in fact does the streets, then that would, that the, the check we write to the county would come out of the streets and sidewalk budget, what you're saying? That we have the parks budget for maybe the private person, or something like that.
Yeah.
Uh, so, I, this is a side question concerning the budget, where, where are we at with that? Is the finance, finance committee scheduled to meet at some point?
I don't wanna talk about that.
Yeah, I'll address that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, number four, parks update, um, this has been discussed, uh, we are currently having a meeting Thursday at seven?
Correct.
Seven o'clock, and that meeting will be here, is that correct?
Yes.
And that will be the board members, or the advisory board?
Right.
And myself and Councilman Reddish, and your guys are more than welcome.
Councilman eighty-two, I'm on the park board.
That's right, Councilman eighty. Uh, do you wanna say anything about that?
Um, well, I have the minutes here, we'll enter in the record from the April thirteenth meeting. Um, I'll do the agenda tonight for Thursday night's meeting, and then that'll go out tomorrow. Um, what we're gonna do is, we're going to go over the old, the agenda items with respect to the park, uh, that we might do there, and then we'll add new items with respect to Winning Hill Park and the parks down here. Um, also, and this is, this is exclusive of the park board, we have to, I, it's my opinion that we should accelerate this process of hiring an individual parks person. The question remains, do we want to hire a full-time person and/or a part-time person, or are we fine with just a full-time person? I also, it is my opinion that, uh, right now, we have three applications pending. I, I've gone through them a couple of times, um, I can give my recommendation for, I think we ought to hire. Um, I, I would like for the council to perhaps look at those applications as soon as possible. Uh, and, um, it seems to me that this is a situation wherein we can turn this over to our executive here, the mayor, and say, make a phone call, hire the person. I don't, we need a resolution to hire the person, he's fully capable of hiring individual. And it may be too, that, that individuals who, on this council, that really aren't involved with the park situation, if it were me and I weren't involved, I would say, hey, I fully trust your opinion on this, go for it. I wanna get it rolling, much like the weeds, these are the things that don't wait for us, because it's now the third week in May.
And Ed, Ed mowed the entire big park today.
See?
Or maybe not the entire thing, but a huge portion.
Yeah, he got quite a bit done today. He did, he did shake his park yesterday, I heard him out there.
So, uh, and I know I've been gone, and, and Mr. Mayor, you indicated that you wanted to run these applications by the board, perhaps? To get their opinion on it, is that a necessity?
No.
I mean, ultimately, we have to make the decision.
No, I think this is our, yeah, I want the council to do just what Councilman Reddish suggested. Take a look at the applicants, um, just kind of give them your, your opinion about it, I'll get right with you, okay? And just give your opinion about that, and we'll, we'll get somebody hired, because we are, we need to hire somebody right away here, where grass is growing, the rain is coming in.
We're, again, we're behind that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, it's gonna be, we knew that was gonna happen, but we should have, like I say, this should have been addressed maybe a little bit earlier, and it just wasn't, so, yes.
The, in consideration of the hiring and the hours and whatnot, uh, just wanna make a mention that that came up in the library board meeting, and they were wanting to inquire as if, or to find out if they could have utilization of that person to help with some of the library stuff. Like, uh, uh, maybe you can remember, Nicole, it was like, chair.
Just general, like handy person.
Well, yeah, handy person around, around town hall for like.
Looking towards the future, if they get the eighty-eight bathrooms in there, they were hoping that that parks person would.
Be able to clean the bathrooms.
Yeah, so they budgeted eight hours a week, maybe, or something like that.
And, uh, she had, they, they had their events over here, and they'd like help with stacking the chairs and, and stuff like that. So, they, they asked for that consideration with this new person.
And, and they've created a line, I don't know, on their budget to pay for it.
I would say that that would be a different individual, because one person with these parks is gonna be a handful, and I just don't feel that this is, this is, and I would go back to Councilman Johnson suggesting that we get a custodial group person that comes in, and we hire them through that budget.
A separate person.
Yeah, a separate person, yeah. I mean, is that in agreeance with you guys?
Yeah.
Any?
Yeah, uh, I think we'll find out again, that the parks and the trash and everything, keeping the town clean, it's gonna be a real handful here, starting this weekend. You'll, you know, come Sunday morning, all, every one of these garbage cans is gonna be full.
So, I, I would ask the council to, to, in the next day or so, if they can look at those applications, and I think it's pretty straightforward, did you?
I trust you.
Uh, I'd be glad to take a look, I'm at, at the meeting, and we'll, we'll like, uh, we'll make a recommendation of the mayor and move forward.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, uh, just a couple things, uh, fiscal finance meeting, uh, I'll get together with Reed tomorrow, and we will get a date set in stone.
Okay.
And it probably looks like it might be next week sometime, so, hopefully, that will be a clue. How many committee members here?
That was my question.
Oh, yeah, Nicole's on it now.
Who else is on the finance committee?
Julian.
Jim, Julian.
I have one. Okay, is tomorrow?
No, next week, we'll, next week.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, the other thing is, um, potholes, uh, there are some tremendous craters starting along several streets in town. And I had a gentleman talk to me a little bit about the street that he was on, and I drove down it, and it was like going through Germany after World War Two, it was just pitted and, so, I mean, it's a graded road, so, you know, hopefully, we can do that, but I think we also need to look at, um, putting something into the asphalt to seal those holes, because they just don't fill anything. So, I know, um, Mr. Bukinich has stuff that he can do. Uh, do you have any update on the mang chloride? I thought today that that, they were putting that down, but it was just water and grating, is that correct?
I did, no, I didn't, I kind of found the topic happening today. Um, but I didn't ask him on the phone, since he said he'd be back tomorrow. The last conversation I had was that stuff, that, that stuff being the equipment, was supposed to be here November fifteenth, and to my knowledge, it's not here. So, I don't know what we, if we need to get the information, contact the information, and call these people. Um, I, I don't know what, what the, the public works director's motivation is or isn't on it, but when people say they're going to do something in a professional manner, I think they, it should be followed up, like, what the heck is going on here? Again, this is a time-sensitive, critical application, um, and if we keep pushing it out, it's just not gonna do what it's supposed to do. We, we, we've been dealing with this since February, the process, so, that'll be number one on our, our question list for the public works director. Um, and if there's any ambivalence or pushback, then I'm just gonna get the number and call the company, so.
Okay, so you're gonna handle that?
Yeah, the tanks set up, all that, oh, and there is a side issue with that, there's, I don't know the exact figure, it might be three or four thousand dollars, uh, worth of material that we purchased that is still, the county still has. So, we either get reimbursed with that material, or we get money for that material and let them keep it. So, that, I mean, and that's something that can be worked out with the public works director, I would assume, and their people. They still have a bunch of our material.
They are getting a new load person.
Coming.
The county, yes, so.
How long did that, that individual last, six months?
I don't know, but anyway.
Well, the last one, yeah, about six months.
It's a merry-go-round.
But anyway, that's, that is what's up with that. Uh, and we are addressing, uh, I did inform, um, Mr. Bukinich that we do have a big, uh, parade coming up, a grand opening, I want the streets to look good, I want the potholes done and, and graded and.
Red striped?
Yeah, whatever, I mean, yeah, let's make this place look nice. Um, I did also talk to, uh, the insurance, uh, appraiser, adjuster, insurance adjuster. Um, I did also talk to, uh, the insurance, uh, appraiser, adjuster, insurance adjuster for the, or MMIA for the wall out here. And he suggested that he had looked at the bill carefully and had went around in his office and he thought that it was too high, the appraisal was too high. So what I am going to do is get ahold of the contractor and, um, talk to him and see what his thoughts are and then get back to Mr. Allen tomorrow morning, so that's what I will do.
That's to fix this wall out here?
Out here, yeah.
In the front, in the front.
Oh, that one, okay.
They asked about that in the library.
Right. The, the, the estimate was six thousand and the contractor's bid was eight thousand, so it seems to me, there's a threshold. If it's twenty-five percent more than their assessed estimate, then they need to get a second quote. So it's either the contractor will come down a little bit or we'll have to get a second quote. Um, if it were me, I would just say seven, you know, meet them halfway or something like that.
But anyway, I will, I'll let everybody know what's going on with that. That's all I really have, um, does the council have anything that they'd like to bring up before we?
Not at this time. I, I, I have some thoughts which I'm gonna discuss with Councilman Reddish about the parks. And, but I might make some motions at the next meeting. If I do, I'll have everything in writing ahead of time, so everybody understands where I'm coming from and why I'm requesting certain things.
Get on your agenda.
Yeah, but I wanna, I wanna sit down and talk to Councilman Reddish first, okay?
Anybody else? Okay, I need a motion to.
Adern.
Will it give me that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, who has a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, county council meeting, May thirty-third, two thousand seventeen, I'll come up again.